All right, good evening, everyone. I would ask that you please rise for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Wise and loving God, we stand before you with the hands, the minds, and the hearts that you have given us. Help us to put our hands at your service through the work of our city. Bless our minds to understand the best way to help those less fortunate. And we ask that you give our hearts the ability to inspire the actions that our minds conceive. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's 5:30, 5:37, August 17th, 2020, and I'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum.
First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator Andrew Bremseth for any additions or corrections to the printed agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. The agenda is as presented this evening. We don't have any changes to make.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion approving that agenda. Thank you, Justin.
I'll second your honor.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings, there are no bids to award, and there are no petitions or communications this evening. Under the consent agenda, there are five items this evening for our consideration. They're included in your packet. If anyone would like to discuss any of those items individually, we will remove them. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda, approving the -- thank you. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, Tom. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions tonight, we will consider a resolution authorizing the sale of real estate, a city-owned parking lot on the corner of Cascade Street and Lincoln Avenue, and we will call on our city administrator Andrew Bremseth to begin this discussion. Good evening, Andrew.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Good evening. I think this may be what our audience is here for tonight, and just want to say this is great to have a crowd. We've been lonely here since COVID, and appreciate everybody for showing up tonight. I think we may have a good discussion. But anyway, we introduced this at the last meeting two weeks ago. I mentioned at that point there was a purchase agreement on the table to sell the property for $328,000 to Rivers Edge Investments LLC, and I highlighted how we came to that sales price at the last meeting. We have to wait 10 days between the introduction and acting on a purchase agreement, which is what's before you this evening, as that's spelled out in the city's charter, to give the public an opportunity to understand what's happening and to give them an opportunity to comment. And I know, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned at the last meeting you're going to give folks the opportunity to do that, and I think there's probably folks in the audience tonight that wish to do that. So I don't have a lot to add from last time, other than I just wanted to reiterate that the council discussed this back in January of 2020, and then at the February 3rd city council meeting approved a letter of intent. And at that time, we spelled out exactly what was within that letter of intent. It gave two years for a due diligence period. Things have moved along quickly. The appraisal process went fairly well, and that brings us to tonight with this purchase agreement in front of us. If the council wants to act on that, they're certainly free to do so tonight, or if they need additional information, we stand by to answer any questions in that regard as well. So I think that the plan of attack, Mayor, is to ask folks to comment on that, and then I think the city council needs to decide which direction they want to go.
Sure. Thank you.
And let me real quickly, Your Honor, I mentioned this at the last meeting, but I think it's important. One of the contingencies within the purchase agreement is related to tax increment financing. The discussion tonight is not about tax increment financing. The developer has not applied for tax increment financing at this time, and I don't want to speculate as to what that request may be. But I will say, by approving this purchase agreement this evening, if that's the direction you go, you are not approving tax increment financing. That is a separate discussion that has to take place down the road.
Thank you. And I would just add that, you know, I'm sure that we're going to have plenty of discussion. I think parking is another issue. Trail access is another issue that has been brought up. And again, those are not decisions that necessarily we're going to make tonight, but we can address those through a development agreement were there to be a TIF agreement that would be brought before the city as part of this project. So we're going to have opportunity for the developer to present, and then the public to comment, but for the sake of parliamentary procedure, let's get a resolution on the floor.
I'll play, Your Honor.
When you make that resolution, Justin.
Second half.
Tom. Okay, we have a resolution in a second. Donovan, would you like to, would you like to address the council?
Yeah. Good.
Good evening, Donovan, and thank you for being here.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council. My name is Donovan Rognes, and I'm here this evening representing Rivers Edge Investment and asking that you guys would vote in favor of the sale of the city-owned parking lot on the corner of Cascade and Lincoln. Rivers Edge Investments is occupied by six individual investors. Five of the investors live in Fergus Falls and call Fergus Falls home. Rivers Edge Investments was started earlier this year and solely exists for the desire to redevelop the corner of Lincoln and Cascade. Earlier this spring, Rivers Edge Investments closed on the purchase of the former Shopko property. With the help of Annie and Greater Fergus Falls, we were able to find two local businesses to occupy the building for short-term tenants. Vector Windows is a local manufacturing company. They had a need for temperature-controlled storage, so we were able to lease to them approximately 2/3 of our building. This meets their needs for the next few years as they look forward to their own long-term solution for storage. Balanced Gymnastics is a startup business in our town, and we were able to lease to them about 1/3 of the existing building to use as their training facility. This, too, meets their needs for the next few years as they also hope to own their own facility. With the help of these two local businesses, Rivers Edge Investments is now able to focus on Phase 1 of their downtown redevelopment plan. And that brings us to the city parking lot. Could you clarify the first picture? Rivers Edge Investments has put together a plan to build a new four-story building downtown. The main floor will consist of approximately 7,500 square feet of commercial and retail space, as well as on-grade parking for the residential tenants above. Stories 2 through 4 will consist of approximately 33 new living units. We believe this plan will bring new jobs and more people to our downtown. This current view here is an aerial. If you were thinking of yourself on the corner of Lincoln and Cascade, the existing Shopko would be back in that green area in the back, so you'd be looking from the corner of Lincoln and Cascade. Okay, next one? This is from the same spot, but this would be a ground view of it. And this shows that as of today, we kind of have an idea for four commercial tenants on the main floor, and each living unit above would have their own balcony either facing the street or on the backside, it'd be facing the river. Okay? And this is the one that is, just focuses up on the potential for commercial spots that we would be able to have downtown. Can you flip that? Okay. If you could zoom in a little bit, if you probably could, more in that yellow area. So this is going to be the, this is the desired layout of the building. The, within the parking lot, you'll see that there's the four tenant spaces with windows viewing the north, and then to the right there, running north and south, would be the on-grade enclosed parking. We were not able to go underground with parking due to water tables near the river, but, and those other pictures don't show that little wing coming out because they'd be behind it, but that'd be the first story, and then you could see the, kind of the desired layout of the apartments, which would be stories 2, 3, and 4. So you can see the existing Shopko in blue and how we would put that in there and how we would be taking up a lot of the city parking lot and also of our currently-owned Shopko parking lot in order to get that building to fit in there. There would be a drive-through in the upper left-hand corner, and that would be a one-way out onto South Cascade. Traffic would no longer be coming in from Cascade. They would enter from Lincoln, and for that drive-through, they would exit out as a one-way. So in closing, Rivers Edge has already invested over $1 million into this project with the purchase of the old Shopko building, and is prepared to invest another approximate $5 million into development of this building. Five of the six investors of Rivers Edge Investment live and work in Fergus Falls, and six of the six investors believe that Fergus Falls is a good opportunity, or this is a good opportunity for our community, and that this project can be a great anchor for our downtown and its businesses. So tonight, we ask the council to vote in favor for the sale of the city parking lot so in unity, we can promote growth, both in jobs and in living in our beautiful downtown and riverfront properties.
Thank you, Donovan.
Thank you.
The, Donovan, why don't you, if you don't mind, if the council has any questions right now, Donovan, I'm sure there's some people in the public that want to speak as well, but does the council, before Donovan sits down, have any questions specifically for Donovan?
I think one question would be, what's the desired use or plan for the Shopko building itself?
So currently, we've got a, we've got three-year leases on our tenants, and so for the next three years, that would stay as is. And we don't have a defined plan yet. We all know with COVID and different things happening in our society today, that that is, if Phase 1 is not a complete success, if it's a slow developing process, then the Shopko building itself will be a decision we made throughout that process. But I think the long-term process would be that for sure, the Shopko building is either updated with a whole new face and redone, or it is removed and, like, building would be placed in its spot. So one of those two options. But we know that we will not leave the Shopko building as is for the long term, but for the short term, we would, as we develop Phase 1.
Thanks, Donovan. Brent?
What is the timeline that you have on the existing structure that you're looking at building?
Our Phase 1 there? We would, if things progress and we can get everything done that we want, we would like to start in the spring of next year, starting in April.
Other questions to Donovan before we open up for public comment? Thank you, Donovan.
Great.
So at this time, if anyone in the audience is here to address the council regarding this project, please step to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, and feel free to address the council. Good evening, Annie.
Good evening, mayor, council members, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. We are very excited about this project. In Fergus Falls, this is definitely a very awesome opportunity for our community, especially projects like this sometimes are challenging to bring cities of this size, so we're very, very excited. The land transaction is definitely the cornerstone for this multimillion-dollar mixed-use development to help add value, activity, and livelihood to our downtown. This project not only will add substantially more ADA-compliant residential units downtown, but it also will offer commercial office space, excuse me, commercial space that meets the needs of regional and national chains and franchises. We don't have a huge inventory of those types of space in this community, so that puts a really good tool in our toolbox. As Donovan kind of went over, we've been working hard on this project for almost a year now. Substantial investment has already been made to help local manufacturer Vector Windows grow and local entrepreneur Tiffany Jenin open up her new business downtown. I know with redevelopment, particularly when it comes to redeveloping in downtowns and along the river, things such as parking can come up as potential issues, which is a very valid concern. We've heard a lot about that. I think one way to think about it is, when you take a look at the parking in downtown, this is one of the, if not the, most underutilized city-owned parking lot in downtown Fergus Falls. And we take a look at that, yes, the city is giving up the parking, but when you start looking at the highest and best use of what a site is going to be, you know, a year ago, this site was a 35,000-square-foot empty big box surrounded by predominantly, you know, parking lot not utilizing the river. And the proposed project we have in front of us has the opportunity to, you know, depending on what Phase 2 looks like, this is going to be a significant investment in our downtown that will provide long-term value and an increase in property tax value in perpetuity. So tonight, as we move forward, I know we all work really hard to promote Fergus Falls as a place to do business, and we have made momentum and are getting a really good reputation as a place to do business. So I'm asking the council to not delay making a decision on this, to make a decision tonight to approve the purchase agreement as we work forward. With the other elements of the project, I think there's an opportunity through the development agreement to continue discussion, but to show our support of doing business in Fergus Falls, I ask you to approve the purchase agreement.
Thanks, Annie. And I would agree with you, Annie, in the sense I think it's important to move forward on this project. I think this is an opportunity, and we need to show that we're supportive of this project. I do think the concerns over parking are valid. I believe that as, if there's, there will be a development agreement, and we can address those as a council, and I believe that there's an opportunity to address those concerns, to get the people in the room and make sure that we move forward. I don't think it's an either-or, I think it's an and-but. So I'm completely in support of the project moving forward and taking care of those issues. You know, it's been a couple of years, we've probably owe the entire downtown a comprehensive parking study. There's some of the procedures been put in place as far as the no overnight parking or affecting some of the current situations in the tenants down there. So anyway, I think that as part of this, we definitely can work through the parking issues through a development agreement. That's, and it's, again, it's important for me to, we move forward on this project. When someone brings a project this magnitude to our downtown that we've been working this long to redevelop, I think we need to show support and show that we can work through the issues with the existing business owners. Would anyone in the audience like to address the council? Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Ryan Hansen, Realtor here in Fergus, focused primarily on residential housing, and that is a topic I was appointed to the Housing Task Force a couple of years ago that the city put together and we met 15 different times. And the overwhelming results of that is we just don't have enough housing in Fergus, and we've seen that continue to be an issue, and specifically this year. I searched just before coming here, and there are 43 properties currently for sale in Fergus that do not have contracts on them. If we go back three years ago, that number was about 150 to 160. So if we want people coming to our community, we have to have places for them to go. So this project in particular, not only am I an agent, I'm also an investor. So I am one that believes that we should come with solutions instead of problems. And so I looked at this as an opportunity to redevelop downtown, get lots of people involved, and saw it as a win-win for both the community and for citizens that want a place to do business and a place to live. So I support the project, and thank you for the time.
Thanks, Ryan. I know that, Lisa, can you hear me? Lisa, did you want, I know you sent out an informal survey of the business, of your chamber members, I'm sorry, this afternoon. Did you want to briefly go over that with the council? Good evening, Lisa. Hang on a second, Lisa.
Is she on mute?
I think she might be on mute on her end.
You're not muted on your end, are you, Lisa? Hmm, all right.
May I do sign language?
Sign language?
Well, I, you know what? While we work out those technologies, I hope the council had a chance to read through that report from the chamber, that, just correct me with a hand gesture or something, Lisa, if I'm incorrect, but this chamber's not necessarily taking a position, but your members, you did give them the opportunity to comment. Overwhelming majority of those comments were in favor. The few that were, had anything to say just were worried about the parking. They were concerned about the parking, and again, they wanted to see the parking. They weren't against the project, they wanted to make sure that the parking concerns were addressed as part of the process. So, Lisa, if you get online, you can add anything you want to, but that was what I took away from that survey. Chief, yes, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was asked to look into the parking issue. I think in the past, gosh, I don't know if it's been two or four years, we've gone through a number of parking studies, so to speak, of the downtown area. I was asked to look into the issue again as the sale of this property came up. The previous numbers really haven't changed to current. You know, we're only seeing about four cars a night parked in that parking lot during the daytime. I think the average is about six. And I think that number at six is even a little high because that's where the Otter Express picks up and drops off people on the way to Fargo in the morning. So those are the best numbers I can give you as far as how utilized that lot is, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think there's close to 100 parking stalls currently in that lot. And thank you, Andrew, for bringing me this. Ninety-three, the average in the previous studies was eight. The high use was 12. And like you said, just in the last week or two since this issue's come up, we've again gotten out there every day, counted cars at night during the day, and again, the average is about four and a half roughly at nighttime, about six during the day.
Thank you, Chief.
I don't think it's an issue that can't be overcome.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else, before we call for the vote, anyone else? Oh, Lisa's got a, I'll chat. I just can read the part that says Mayor Shire is correct.
That's called selective reading. It says, "We provided members the opportunity to share their comments and are happy to provide details as needed." Mayor Shire is correct in his summary.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Anyone else comments before we call for, Anthony?
I would just say that I too, I kind of tend to walk past the Shopko parking lot pretty much every morning, and, you know, even over the weekend, the maximum was five cars in there, and one of those typically would normally park actually on the opposite side. And, I mean, there's one car in there that's got a flat tire that has obviously been there for a substantial amount of time. So I think, you know, that if we want people to move downtown and live downtown and shop downtown, we have to make facilities for them, and that, you know, there are other places where we can find accommodation for cars. And so I think it's, you know, and I can tell you now, I am not going to vote for another study, you know? So, you know, we have more than enough studies and plans, and a study to, you know, look at where people are going to park doesn't, it's not going, I'm not going to vote for it. So I think, you know, we need to move on. The only thing I would say when it comes to the TIF agreement, you know, we have a rendition, and not that I don't trust the people, but what you present is what you build. If you build something different, then I will fight to take away your TIF. I voted against the TIF agreement for the Tower Apartments because they did not build what they said they were going to build, and they built it in the wrong place. You should not be able to build it in the wrong place because you had owned the land, but that would be my only comment on the TIF funding, is that, you know, I believe, and we believed and trusted in the people previously, and I believe and I trust in this group also.
Sure.
And I think you will do, and I think it will be a compliment for this end of downtown. And a lot of the people that I have spoke to are excited about something happening that will be, you know, substantial to the downtown area. And with that, I would make, I--
Yeah, we have a, yeah, we have a resolution. Thank you, Anthony. And I would just, you know, I think we can, speaking of TIF, we're obviously going to have, you know, a robust discussion around TIF when that time comes, but I think to your point, I think we'll take the lessons learned from past experiences, and I think that we can, we can learn from those past experiences to make sure that, that when we get there, we can make that a positive thing. Other questions, comments before we call for the vote? Scott, yeah, go ahead.
I think that the impression could easily be reached by the public that this thing came through pretty fast and there wasn't enough time to really get a grasp of what it all involved and what it might, you know, what might take place when this happens. And I don't have any, necessarily any real fight with the project itself. I was concerned and expressed my concern early on about the parking and what might be done about that. I think if we had a little time for the review of this, we could address those questions for people and satisfy that question. Anthony mentioned some questions that we might have about TIF. I've got some serious questions about that and how that might be involved down the line since it's been made clear to us that this project will not go forward without TIF funding. And even though this vote tonight is on the purchase of the property, it's ineffective vote to approve a future TIF agreement because without the TIF agreement, the project doesn't happen. And with that in mind, I think it would be prudent for us to allow for a little more time to review. If we were to take two weeks or even a month, allow this to go to the Planning Commission for review and get a recommendation from the Planning Commission, a recommendation from staff with some rationale, you know, some, something more than just five minutes' worth of comments at a city council meeting, I think it would be a much easier sell to the community, and we wouldn't delay a 2021 construction start in any way if we were to take a couple of weeks at this point and really solidify just really what this is and how it's going to go forward. To that end, if it was possible to make a motion to that effect, I would like to do that.
We have a resolution on the floor.
So then, if it was possible to make a motion to table the resolution until it could be picked up again, I'd like to do that.
Does someone like to second the motion to table the resolution? Seeing none, that motion would fail for lack of a second. And we do have a resolution. Thank you, Scott. Is there anyone else who would like to comment before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 No.
That resolution is approved. Under presentation of claims, this evening, there are claims in the amount of $1,044,710.72. If there's any questions regarding the payment of those claims, we will direct them to our finance director. Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
All right, for the resolution, pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Brent. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. A resolution is approved. There are no board committee or department reports. Under reports from staff and administrative officers, we'll have an update on the CARES funding plan for the city of Fergus Falls, and I'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. The recommendation this evening, before I get started, is to pass a resolution approving the framework for our CARES spending plan and giving the Tax Levy Committee distribution oversight of these funds. And just for, as a reminder, the Tax Levy Committee is made up of Mayor Shire, council member Hicks, myself, with the assistance of our finance department. So the city of Fergus Falls has granted $1,035,703 in CARES relief fund, which this council previously accepted. We did receive the entirety of those funds back on July 28th, and they are now ready to be distributed. The Tax Levy Committee has been having ongoing discussions now for probably the last two months about what the next step should be and what the best process is, and that's why we're here this evening. So we're recommending the following framework for allocation of these funds. Again, $1,035,703 is the total. We're recommending that we set aside $400,000 of that to cover city of Fergus Falls incurred expenses related to COVID-19. We're recommending $150,000 to be set aside for education and childcare needs. We're recommending $400,000 to be set aside for business and other nonprofit needs in the community. And then we have an other kind of catch-all category of that remaining, $85,703. This is really high-level just framework, of course. If there's a need in one area, these need to be able to be fluid, and we need to be able to respond to those needs. I don't personally envision the city gets to their full amount, so then that money could be shifted to another bucket, but just, just to be fully transparent about that.
Andrew, would you just go over those buckets again, just real quick? Here, here's them again.
Yep, I'd be glad to. And again, $1,035,000 is the total amount, so if you're trying to figure out percentages, $400,000 city of Fergus Falls. to figure out percentages, $400,000 city of Fergus Falls, $400,000 to the business and nonprofit community, $150,000 for education and childcare needs, and then the $85,703 in a catch-all category, that is meant to be flexible. So, the tax levy committee plans to engage outside stakeholders to help administer funding processes for some of these spending areas, namely the business and nonprofit sectors, of course. Criteria will be established for each pool of money, and then there'll be an application process, which makes applicants highlight their COVID-19 expenses and other information that might be required for decision-making. Recommendations ultimately will come back to the tax levy committee, and then final approval by the finance staff to ensure that all app, all funding would be made in a manner that's consistent with federal guidance and the following audit that would take place of these funds. I think he has a question, you want me to finish real quick?
Nope.
Okay. So just, I just wanted to highlight again, one more time, there's three criteria for these funds. One, they must be costs incurred necessary to the response of COVID-19 or the public health emergency. Two, they cannot be budgeted expenses within the last budget that was approved, so the city can't do things now with these funds that were previously budgeted for. And then finally, costs must be incurred between March 1st and December 30th of this year. That comes from the federal guidance, but the state of Minnesota put on more restrictive guidance to cities, and we have to have our, all of our funds expensed by November 15th of this year, so. We have less than three months to, to make all these decisions, get all the money out the door, and which is, time is of the essence. And then finally, we have also been in contact with Ottertail County on multiple occasions, they received over $7 million in CARES funding, and we plan to do our best to coordinate efforts with Ottertail County to ensure the city of Fergus Falls, or businesses and others in the city of Fergus Falls are well-positioned to be able to access the most resources as possible. I would really like to see, lie in share of those county funds spent within Fergus Falls as the largest city, and we're advocating to that effect, and we're working closely with them to ensure that we can get the, the best deal for our local residents as it relates to those CARES funds, so. That's, that's really it in a nutshell, again, I'm asking for the council to approve a resolution that adopts the framework of these expenditures, and then also gives the tax levy committee the oversight to do this work. We don't have enough time to be coming back to the council for every expenditure.
Yeah, thanks Andrew, and I just, a couple of comments. First of all, you know, the city and the tax levy committee has done the best job we can to identify the needs within the community. That's not to say that there aren't needs out there that we haven't identified, so we just want to make sure that the public understands that if there are needs out there that we haven't identified, we, you know, yes, we have to move fast, but we want to make sure that we use these funds, that all needs are identified, and quite frankly, we make the biggest impact possible. So the public is more than welcome to contact us with suggestions or needs that have been overlooked. And then I just want to clarify something, or just emphasize, reemphasize something that you said Andrew, and that is that we're working with, in cooperation with the county, to leverage what the county's doing for our small businesses. By the time this is all said and done, probably 60-plus percent will be spent on local business, small business and nonprofit. We're working with greater Fergus Falls, we hope to work with the chamber to identify the needs of those businesses. There was a quote in MinPost that was interpreted by some that we weren't going to be giving grants because we're going to let the county do that. The quote was simply to say that we don't want to duplicate what the county's doing so that our businesses are not eligible for one of the funds or the other. We want to leverage working cooperation, we're certainly going to work to support our small businesses. We understand that right now, as we sit, they have been the hardest impacted by this pandemic, and we're going to support them. We're just going to do it in a way that leverages the county, doesn't compete with them, works in cooperation. So, just want to make sure that that is very clear to the business community, that we are here to support you with these funds in every way we can. So, thank you for your presentation, Andrew, and questions?
You answered it, I, that was on number three, I was wondering how can cost be incurred to December 30th, but we have to have it spent by November 15th, but you answered it fairly eloquently, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to be misleading in that, because other jurisdictions have different rules, of course.
Right.
The county, for example, they have longer than us, if we don't spend our money by November 15th, it actually goes to Ottertail County, so. Federal guidance, and what you may have heard on the news, is December 30th, but the state of Minnesota has restricted the timeline for us.
So, so we're looking for a resolution that Andrew...
All our party, Your Honor.
Thank you, Justin. Caroline, Anthony, as a member of that committee, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I, I think, what I would like to say is that, you know, adding to what obviously Andrew and Ben have said, I think, you know, there is an opportunity for us to obviously cover some of the costs that people have not been reimbursed for previously, and it is a time to also think outside of the box a little bit on, you know, if, if I had some money, you know, and I could spend it on my business that would help me get, get better from a, you know, from a distancing point of view, you know, and the same for nonprofits, you know, there's, there's a, there's a great need for feeding people too, so, you know, places like the Salvation Army, you know, think outside the box as to, you know, if you, if, it's almost like the time, it's Christmas, it's a wish list, you know, you know, we have to spend the money, if you provide us with a framework of what you want to spend the money on, and it's COVID-related, you know, and that's the thing, it has to be COVID-related. We can't build a building for you, but we could help you with some temporary accommodations and things like that, so, you know, think outside the box of what you come to the committee with, and where we can as well, we're also cooperating with the county, adding to what Ben said, you know, so if it's a bigger project, it might be that, you know, we can work with the county and, and help get it done.
Thanks Anthony.
Ben?
Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
Actually, a couple of questions, one, Andrew, you can probably answer it pretty quickly. The structure of the money is clearly grants, right? This isn't any kind of a loan program? Or is it just strictly grants?
It is, I want Bill to explain about that.
Okay. Just so that people would know as they approach it, whether they are, you know, how, how it's coming.
Yeah, and I'm going, I'm going to preface it that, you know, we, we're not looking to, at this as grant dollars, so I don't really like the word grant in that, it's a grant to the city for this, but we will be reimbursing COVID expenses, so we're going to be looking at actual, you know, prove your expenses to us, because the city of Fergus Falls is responsible, even when these funds leave our coffers and we disperse them to someone else. So we're not just going to be making a grant to a business, we're going to be needing to reimburse expenses that are actually incurred for COVID. Very stressed that this is for COVID-19 related. And within the application form, we'll want, you know, to get that documentation for those expenses, so it would be more of a reimbursement for expenses, we're not just going to be giving out a grant, so.
That helps clear it up.
But, with that, and we can't have revenue replacement either, you know, you can't just say, well, I lost this amount of revenue, we cannot replace revenue, but you know, maybe in that time, things were shut down, you are still making mortgage payments, paying rent, paying utilities, those are expenses, so we will certainly look at those.
Could I just add one thing on top of that to answer your question Scott, is that if a particular business, say, applied to retrofit their building because of the pandemic, we're not looking at it as a loan though, it would be, it would be...
Correct.
A grant, in that sense, so I know you don't like the term grant, but we're not looking at collecting this back.
Grant for those expenses, right?
Non-reimbursable loan.
There you go.
Okay.
Right, yeah, it's not going to be a loan, so.
That's fine, the other question that is probably fairly simple too, and there's been examples given for what businesses might do, but I wonder if either you or Andrew could give us an example or two, not a long list, of how the city might use some of this might.
Sure, definitely, I think of the library off the bat, you know, different things we've had to do to retrofit things there for distancing, so those expenses, and then also, you know, working remotely. Starting out, we had very few that could just easily go working remotely, so we have been ordering some laptops, some different things for mobility purposes, so. But certainly, all the Plexiglas things, all the PPE, all those things you first think of, doing those as well. Andrew, am I missing anything big that I'm...
No, I was going to say technology is really the big one.
Technology, huge, so.
At the forefront, and we're already incurring those expenses to get people ready to go.
You know, even an example of our council meetings, Zooming, and we have some technology issues with that, because you can't always YouTube and Zoom at the same time, well, if we need to expand some bandwidth for that, that is a qualified expense as well, so we're looking at things like that too.
Anything else Scott?
No, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. So we have a resolution, and a second, we have, any further comments? Roll call please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under old business, we have an OLV school request to Block Kevora Avenue from Oak to Vines on school days, and we'll call on our chief of public safety, Kyle Berger, and good evening Kyle.
Thank you, Your Honor. I was unable to be in attendance for the committee, the whole meeting when this subject was brought up. Since then, I've had a chance to talk with Tanya Zirdan, the principal over at OLV, and I think we came to some type of an agreement. I'll just say, I'm typically not a big fan of temporary road closures, doesn't, I just don't find them safe, if you've ever been at an accident scene, if you've worked on a construction crew, or even been at an event where you have a temporary road closure. People are just in the habits of, of traveling on certain routes, and, and so I shared that with Tanya as well, that I just don't feel that temporary road closures are always the safest thing, you know, they may look that way on the surface, but just in practice, I found them to be somewhat dangerous. I provided the council, in your email, a couple handouts, one is the safe routes to school. It's kind of the, on a national level, it's kind of the, the bible as, as it talks about school safety when it comes to pedestrian, safety and bicycling, and I think that kind of reinforces what we're, what our compromise is. I also included a little case study, and granted, it's from the company that we're buying the, the signs from, so it's probably a little skewed, but I think it, it really hits home the point, it's the exact same scenario that's playing out within our own community, played out in a community in Wisconsin. So, what the proposal is, is an LED school pedestrian crossing, set of signs on Kevora Avenue, as well as a mid-block painted crossing, I think there'll be some improvements to the sidewalks, as well as the painted crossing, so that there is access to the, the green space across the street. I'm proposing that the council passes a resolution authorizing the purchase of the equipment, and the quote that I have here today is in the amount of $10,119.41. This is a company that we've used for a number of years, and they have a lot of the same school LED crossing signs that you see at our other neighborhood schools, so. I believe that this would be a, a very prudent alternative to what was proposed, and just bring it before the council.
And speaking of CARES funding, this would be the perfect example of a use of CARES funding.
Yeah, it, not only does it meet, I, I think Tanya talked about their need for social distancing and additional space, but this product also allows for some automation and programming that also contributes to dealing with some of the COVID issues, so.
Sure, thanks, thanks Chief. Someone like to offer that resolution?
I'll make that, Your Honor.
Thank you Anthony.
Second question.
Brent, yeah, go ahead Scott.
The crossing in particular, you mentioned that it was a mid-block crossing, and it seems like that area is fenced off, and so wouldn't they be crossing at the street corner rather than mid-block? And what was the rationale there?
Sure. So, right now, there, there's two doors on the school, one, both of them would actually be, I believe, mid-block, and I've talked with Tanya about, we, we will work with the school and engineering as far as where the exact placement, but they, she said that right now they use both doors, and, and so we didn't really get into the, the weeds a lot about the exact placement, she was going to talk to her staff, but the doors at the school, neither one of them would be hampered by the fence, the fence is actually further to the east, on the school side of the property, on the south side of the property where the green space is, currently there is no fencing, and that's one thing that I did talk with her about, is, again, I wouldn't make it a, a mandate, so to speak, from the city, but I just said, in, in good practice, the school should probably put some type of fencing up on that side of the, of the road, just to keep, you know, some of the playground balls and everything else that might roll into the street out of there, so.
And thanks Chief for coming, you know, for finding a solution to this problem.
No, sure.
And working with them, this is all, obviously important to all of us, that, you know, that they remain safe, and so, Tom, did you have a...
Yeah, I think, I think it sounds like it's a good resolution, my, my only comment would be around setting a precedent. You know, if, if another private organization or business decides that they want a mid-street crossing, do we, do, does the city pay to put that in? And did we, did we pay for the crossings at the high school on, is it Randolph?
You know, I think that, that's a good point, I, I think as, I think I would differentiate schools from other entities and businesses, for one, so we have done nothing else for any other entity, whether it's for-profit or not-for-profit. And as far as schools go, we've done a combination of things, so, around most of the elementary schools, those signs have been paid for by the city, and there are a few signs near Kennedy that were paid for by the city. The one in particular that goes between Kennedy and Roosevelt on Randolph Avenue, that particular crossing was paid for by the district, and I think it was more so, we just at the time didn't have the funding, a lot of the signs that we put up in the past have been grant-funded, a lot of those grants no longer exist, and there was a, kind of an immediate need at that time, so the school district went ahead and paid for that particular crossing, but in general, all the other signs, whether they're pedestrian crossing or school speed limit signs, those have been paid for, you know, by the city in the past. I would say the other thing too is, it goes back to the funding, as I said before, a lot of times we had grants, you know, I don't know if, if we didn't have the CARES Act funding available to us, that I'd be up here suggesting that we pay for it 100%, I think a partnership maybe would have been more appropriate, but just given the, the current situation, I, I feel it would be best to take advantage of that for everyone.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks Chief. Any other questions? We have a resolution on the floor, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Fish.
Yes.
That resolution is approved, there is no new business this evening on miscellaneous announcements, just a couple, committee, the whole meeting, September 2nd, Labor Day, of course, city offices are closed, and then next regularly scheduled council meeting is Tuesday, September 8th. So with that, we will adjourn to a closed meeting under the attorney-client privilege pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D, we're adjourned. We will not be reconvening.